Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our first council meeting of this new term. Before we get started, I'd just like to say that it's an honor to be sitting here as your mayor. And I would like to congratulate all you councillors on being successful in the municipal elections. Thank you for putting your names forward and for your continued commitment to our community. I think we have a really strong team here, and I'm looking forward to working with you all and in order to be a lot accomplished. So with that being said. I welcome you, council, and those in the gallery, here in person and on Zoom. To our November fifth, twenty twenty four committee of the whole meeting, and I'm calling this meeting to order at six oh three P M. We do have a couple of amendments to the agenda. This, there's two payable items on the agenda, the second one, number five. The amount needs to be amended. Okay, so it's going to be changed to two hundred and six thousand nine hundred eighty nine dollars and seventy two cents. The other thing is that number seven will be removed from the agenda, as they are unable to make it this week, so it'll be rescheduled. I think that's all of the amendments, so I will ask for a mover and a seconder to adopt the agenda as amended.
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda.
Thank you, councillor Birkett.
I'll second.
Councillor Slager, any questions, comments? Any none? All question? All favor? Pass. Thank you. So next we have the, we need to adopt the regular council meeting minutes from October first, twenty twenty four. So need a mover and a seconder, please.
I'm making motion to adopt the regular council meeting minutes on October first, twenty twenty four.
Thank you, councillor Slager. Thank you, councillor Edet. Any comments, any questions? No. I think that was a special meeting, too. All favor?
Yeah.
Any questions that you guys had? I'm sorry, they were, they weren't here, so, yeah, it's all favor?
All favor.
Great, passed. So the second set of minutes was from the special council meeting on October eighth, so need a mover and a seconder to adopt those minutes.
Adopt the minutes.
Thank you, councillor Birkett. Seconder, thank you.
Sorry.
Councillor Slager, any comments?
None.
All favor? Yep, passed. Okay, so next up, we have. The open cables. So we have two separate sets of cables that will pass separately.
I'm making motion to open two pay the open payables in the amount of three hundred and ten thousand. Six hundred and fifty two dollars and ninety eight cents.
Thank you, councillor Slager.
I'll second that.
Thank you, councillor Birkett. Questions?
Can we go over some of the big ticket items, also kind of help to slow down the pace of what we got going on? Wasn't Union Tractor on check number sixty six eight five? Those the attachments, didn't we get it twice?
Sorry, what's the number?
Sixty six eight five, unless we were reading something else. Was that not the attachments for the latest?
Union Tractor that month. There was attachments, but also on the capital budget, there, oh, that, sorry, that's Union Tractor, that's created by.
Oh, okay, because they're like the bucket imports.
Yeah, yeah.
Maybe else, yeah, so sixty six eight eight, what is Yukon Planning?
Yukon, Yukon Planning, that is the company, the consulting company. They're the ones that we have under retainer renewing our water license.
Can you remember this?
Sixty six nine five, Miranda Lane.
Yes, so that is payment of consignment goods from the Northern Light Center, she's an artist. And we got in the gift shop, we were selling some of her gifts nearby.
Right now, old time construction, are the other guys that were working on our extended bathrooms?
Sorry, I can't figure.
Were they the guys working on the rock center, old time construction? I can't remember that at all.
So old time. Old time construction is working on, that is the ski hill, that was the new Jack stop of the ski sharing.
That's of course, Sunbase.
I just got a question about Northern Front, if we could just say something about that, item six twenty four, thousand one hundred forty five.
Yeah, Northern Front, that, they're the consulting company that was working on. The community hall. Tanner stuff that we put out, all the documents, that was the final billing for that. And also, we went back because we were, we figured that the bid price was out, outskewed. So we actually had hired to them another, a third party to do the class A. Budgeting on that project.
Okay, thank you. And what about balanced environmental services, the last one, sixty seven oh six?
That is an environmental company that we have doing work down at the sewage rooms.
Any guess? Nothing further? All favor? Passed. So moving on to the next set of payables, and there's also the needs statement there, just in addition to these.
That was included here worship in the first.
First one, okay. So second set of payables. Just two hundred and six thousand nine hundred eighty nine dollars and seventy two cents.
It is the open payables for November first.
Thank you, councillor Birkett.
I'll second, sorry.
Thank you.
And we're working for the record discrepancy in the registry to the amended amounts. Is, there is a bunch of stale dated checks that were reissued. So the reason they're, they're recorded because it isn't checked, I don't know, the check number. But it has already, those amounts have already been approved in other payables. So that's the reason that there's the discrepancy in the two dollar amounts.
So, questions?
Do you want to go on?
This is enjoying some of the names, comments, links, posts like that. Steamroll Services, that was, what were we steaming?
That's not, it's actually Streamroll, actually.
I'll say.
That is our environmental testing consultant that does all the groundwater monitoring testing portion.
Oh, and. If that number was, Streamroll was sixty seven one eight. Looking at sixty seven two two, Yukon Inc., or five thousand six fifty nine? Sorry, sixty seven?
Two two.
Two two, yeah. Sound Post. Services, sixty seven three two. He spent three thousand dollars in eggs. Sorry.
Sixty seven three two.
Or by the first one, or by zero zero six five.
Yeah.
Strange, this is there now. So that, so that one goes to that one. Your worship, that is the economic development grant refunds. So that's where local businesses that reside in Watson Lake get a refund on all taxes. So that's what that is, and that's the same one for cycle services.
Will that also be the same for Watson Lake Foods?
That is correct.
Which is sixty seven three eight.
There's a whole list of them, so you've got three six one four O with Yukon. Where is equipment, signpost, shopping on.
So what are the parameters of that again, Cam? Like, what do they have to do?
They have to be in good compliance on their taxes and any accounts of the municipality. Their taxes have to be paid in full, there has to be a business registered in town that is residing in town.
And they get a rebate, or how's that like?
So, the reason we did that, and council and. The reason we did that was because of the fact that we have to change, charge the same tax. For everybody in those same zones, but that was a loophole, there's a loophole there that. We couldn't put taxes up for like the federal government for those properties. Because of the fact that it has to be the same tax as everybody across the board, we couldn't say that. Federal government has those lands, we want to charge them higher tax for the same zone. So, but we could do a policy with the rebate, which council did at the day, which is a rebate. Or buy law, which allows for a refund to local businesses or local. Industrial properties. So if they live in the municipality and pay the taxes, then they get a rebate on their taxes. Where anybody from outside of the municipality who can charge higher to bring more income into the municipality.
So is rebate given from them here, from the town, or is it rebate given from the government?
No, it's from us, it's municipal development incentive, that's what it is.
So, so because you're charging more to the government?
No, well, we charge everybody the same rate, and then we rebate to the municipal, everybody that lives in town to give them a tax benefit.
Yeah, this is the first I'm hearing of this tape.
And so, is it because the, the taxes that the government's paying are very high? Is that why you're giving this rebate, because it's not?
No.
Because it's not more than that?
It's a, it's a development incentive, so what it is, is because to what council that they, they wanted to put taxes up, right? Because they'll cover our expenses. So it was deemed that we would put the tax a certain amount, but then it would penalize any of our local businesses. So council, we put it, the taxes to a certain mill rate, and then they rebate back to local businesses to keep. Local people, because they, people that they employ people in town, they pay their own property tax for their houses and stuff. So it was an incentive to develop more local business and get more money from the territorial government and the federal government.
And so how many businesses at this point are claiming that rebate?
I don't know them disadvantage, but I think it's the majority of them are. And they'll be all the ones that are listed in here.
Do we send out a letter to them letting them fill out a book, like?
We do, yeah, and actually the forms do it as well. And our staff helps fill them in.
Could we, could we have a look at this policy in the next, in the next council package move request? If that's in the, the next one, the next one coming up, just a.
Can we finish this?
Oh, yeah. It's, it's still, it's, it should arrive in front of us. We can pass that out, just want to make a note that we can just get that policy to look at in the next meeting, the second meeting, and then we can. Go through the rest of the tables.
Yeah, because I think that's why I have so many, it's probably what you're talking about, Cam, there was some money given to a lot of different businesses, so like. Yeah, so I think that's why I, I went through.
So, yeah, I can, I can go through the list of all of them if you would like to know right now.
No, I can see it, just have, this is the first time I ever heard of this policy, and. It's, just seems, just want to look at, that's.
Yeah, it's been before council loss for five years, so. And as we can, administration can get you guys a copy of it for next meeting.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Any other questions about payables? Any more that you got, Tom? I have a few, but. The Argos Association, so six seven, oops, sorry. Sixty seven one two. I didn't even think the Argos Association still has.
That's one of the still dated checks we still have to reissue.
Oh, okay. Right, there's that one. So then. From the leech, is this one of those? So, BC seven one seven, I'm guessing seven one seven for BC Crown Command, the Royal Canadian.
That, that's usually, that's another.
Seven two six, six two seven two six, and then there was Cedar Lodge Motel, which I'm assuming will fall under this.
That's the, that's the development incentive grant.
Yeah, so Cozy Nest is probably the same.
I can tell you all those ones are not, are not all development.
And is the United Restaurants that followed that? Then, what's in there? That one was. Eighteen sixty seven three. Sixty seven three, at the very top of those, second one.
Yeah, no, it's the same thing.
The clear water controls.
That is, that is proven for the water.
Seven four seven, some corp value.
That's, that is our expense for doing our evaluation of our properties for insurance.
Thank you, and that's all I have.
Oh, very, see that North sixty, maybe we got all contractor that you pass.
So, North sixty?
Do you use both, or?
Yes, we use the same things, some is. It's North sixty.
Martha, did you have any questions?
Thanks, sorry. Okay, if there's nothing further, I'll ask, all favor, pass the payables. Pass, thank you. So next up, we have the RCMP. Greg and Artis, I believe, if you want to come up, would be awesome. Yeah. Welcome.
I'm Thomas.
Sorry, I'm Lauren, I'm the mayor, this is Norma Fickett, Thomas Slager, Speaker Birkett, and William, our council. We're officially elected. So we'd like to have the new members to town, have a council, and just.
Speaking soon.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Um, we'd like to have a welcome you to the community, and hoping you'll just like use your sauce and tell us about yourself.
Sure, my name is Constable Bradon, from the East Coast, Canada, Halifax, I grew up there. Recently graduated depot at Aurora Gina, and I've got my first choice, I'm up here to watch Watson Lake in Yukon, I decided to be here. If I introduce myself to you and I forget your names, please forgive me. It's first month, you get a lot of names, a lot of faces, and it's hard to remember them all, but I hope to meet all you guys and establish a connection, get to know each other.
So, thank you.
I'm Corporal Curtis Harper, new supervisor here in Watson Lake, I've been here since about the end of August. Still coming months now, I've got sixteen years with the RCMP, I was all in Saskatchewan before moving up here to the Yukon. I've been trying to come to Yukon for a few years, and it finally worked out for me, so I'm excited to be here. I like the outdoors, the hunting, the fishing, the quadding, so, and all that, so. I got a wife that's working in the community as well, and two boys that are going to the school, so we hope to be seated here for a little bit anyways.
Long time residents, hopefully.
Yeah.
Awesome, great. Well, thank you so much for coming in, it was really nice to meet you, and I'm sure we'll be seeing more of each other. Oh, sorry, did you have anything you want to add?
Well, I, do they play hockey? Oh, Andy, you have the chainsaw. You're great, actually, no firsthand. One of you guys can, I'll bring a chainsaw. So, where books in Saskatchewan, Brian?
Newport, Saskatchewan's where I, I came from, Cam's from hometown, so. Spent six years there, and then I did Alacross. In Northwest for four and a half years there, and a little bit further Northwest from there. And after two years in Canora, that was my first spot down in the southeast corner, so kind of all over the world.
And how old are your kids?
Six and eight, grade one and grade three in school here, they seem to be liking it so far. We all play hockey, gonna be coaching their age group, it sounds like, and playing hockey and. Popped over the minor hockey AGMs on right now, too, so popped over there to hear.
Oh, nice.
They wouldn't let me come here unless I played hockey, so. And I'm sure that there's another one we're working on that doesn't play main, main time, so I think this way you'll be convinced.
Penny balls.
My brother asked, he just, how would you pick Watson Lake, he said there was a ring. There's a ring, and there's a hospital, those are two of the biggest things, yeah.
Awesome.
Not that this was a grand ass for this, but do you have a favorite hockey team?
It's not the Oilers.
I'm a Colorado Owler, I'm sure.
I play too close to the chest, I won't tell you. I like to play the bowling, I just like to find people that cheer for, and then I cheer against. Whoever's playing against the Oilers, I'll cheer against.
All right, I can handle that.
Well, thanks. I'm sure you'd like to hear, you like the Oilers, like fishing, and you like hockey.
Yeah.
That's great. But I do think that our community is in need of some protection. Like to see more of you people than I might. Like. Just be honest, but I want to see you guys. It's not good around here right now, I need help. And if there's anything we can do to help you, we'd like to help you. The highlight, the drugs. The violence, the violence, it's getting way better. And I'm only saying that because that's one of the biggest things I focus on when I'm here after this election. Is to try and do something for our community. We're losing our children, people are getting beaten, our schools are getting vandalized. And we don't see our CMP. I hope for a crack in two months, and up only our CMP at one thirty even more, and then told that you guys won't work after you. This is, this is, I'm, this war in recent, and I'm going to put my heart into this, so I really hope we can work together. And like I said, I'm hoping you guys hear.
Thank you, and we definitely sit and talk about some issues and try to come up with a plan going forward from everybody.
They know, it is only your shortstop and stuff like that, but if we could help. And we, whatever we can here assist you.
Yep.
You would all care.
Absolutely.
Awesome, thank you. Great, I'll let you get back to. Unless anybody has anything else to add.
I have, yeah, a false confidence in people and skills.
We all have those. Just gonna say, I think we're all in there.
Are you sort of out there on Friday, any sort of mood at the end? Yes, two lucky ones, right off the bat. And then it's settled. Any other questions, or? Want to see each other, for sure.
Can I have a few of some personal comments?
The Humane Society? Great.
Yes. Any questions, asking something?
No, I was just asking, like, are we doing?
Yeah, I'm just trying to pull it up. I wasn't able to access the cloud there, so I just have to look for my. Takes a second, so we were receipt of a letter from the Humane Society Yukon requesting a donation. So I'll just read the correspondence out, hopefully you didn't have a chance to read it already, but, so. Dear Mayor, I'm writing on behalf of the Humane Society Yukon to highlight the value of our work and ask for your continued support. Our mission is to foster compassion for animals by promoting their welfare and protection and responsible pet ownership throughout the Yukon. In partnership with you, we believe that we, we believe that the care that we provide to animals, along with our efforts to educate the community about responsible pet ownership. Plays an important role in managing and controlling the animal population in your community. Since 2018, the Humane Society Yukon has rescued more than three hundred animals each year, responding swiftly to community requests to take in animals whenever possible. However, a major challenge we face is that our shelter is consistently operating at capacity, limiting our ability to take in more animals. Every animal we rescue receives essential medical care, including spaying or neutering, vaccinations, anti-urming. And is housed in a warm, loving environment with quality nutrition. This level of care, however, comes with significant costs. The work of Humane Society Yukon is more than just numbers, it's about offering second chances to animals who have lost their first. Every animal that comes to the door has a unique story and the potential to bring joy and companionship to those who adopt them. Our impact goes beyond individual, individual rescues. It fosters kindness, compassion, and responsibility in our communities, making Yukon a better place for both animals and people. And Sabilla's talk of the reasons why our support matters. Rescue and shelter, adoption services, education, and volunteer and youth engagement are all ways that it helps. Most of our financial support comes from the public through corporate sponsorships, businesses, donations, adoption fees, and memberships. We are currently working to raise one hundred and forty thousand dollars this fiscal year to balance our twenty four, twenty five budget. And continue providing essential services to the animals who need us most. So ways to help become a member of the Humane Society Yukon. We encourage you to invite citizens of Watson Lake to join as members, giving your community a direct voice in shaping the future of our organization. With voting rights at our, at our annual general meeting, members can influence key decisions that impact our work. Their membership also sends a powerful message to funders, highlighting the vital role Humane Society Yukon plays in supporting and improving our communities. Meet with us, we would love to visit your community to better understand local issues concerning dogs and cats. And to explore how we can collaborate to address these concerns. We are eager to share more about our work and answer any questions you may have. And then, financial contribution, financial contribution. We urge you to include Humane Society Yukon in your annual budgeting process. Having a reliable and consistent source of funding is essential for us to create sustainable plans for the Maybach Animal Shelter. Ensuring we can provide the care and protection so that many animal, that many animals desperately need. If an annual contribution is not feasible, we ask that you consider a contribution of one to two thousand dollars from your donation budget. Your support is not just appreciated, it is crucial in helping us continue our work in maintaining our vital services in the community. Visit humane society yukon.ca for more info on how to donate. We appreciate the support. So, we will open it up for discussion, but just a little backstory really quickly, because we did talk about this while we were. Or did we turn over our conversation now? I feel like we did talk about this at. One of the councils previous, anyway. Also, A Y C put a resolution on, oh, we, we passed this at the AGM last year. Resolution urging the Yukon government to. Uh, resolution uh urging the Yukon government to fund the Humane Society adequately. I'm not sure where things are at with that resolution right now, but we can follow up on that. Um, also, there was included in the council package our budget variance report for the two um accounts of money. Uh, budget amounts that we basically have to work with um right now. Um, and then, as you all know, we will be starting the budget process soon, so if we want to talk about maybe adding a line for that, then that's something that we can talk about, but as far as like this year. Um, it's just what I was in those reports is what we have to work with kind of right now, so.
So there is no actual line for like donations?
No, and in, and in the past, oh yes, we have a donation budget, and then, so that's what report we are, that's from. Um, and previously we relied heavily on the arm, obviously, to take a lot of our animals. The Humane Society has really um helped us out a lot because I can't can tell you how many animals they've taken from us, but really without them, we would be in a really tough spot. They do a tremendous amount of work for us.
Yes, so you're, so we're, this, in the, over this year, we've sent in excess of seventy dogs plus cats. To the Humane Society and Maybappers and Whitehorse, so it's been a real um bonus for us, um so it does pay dividends.
Yeah, and, and I just wanted to think that we have contributed any, other than maybe donation last year.
We've actually paid for some of the spays and neutering, so that the dogs can be removed, be, or because otherwise they, they're. They didn't have the money to do it, so then they wouldn't take them, and uh some of the other, um, some of the hard to own dogs, the, the, uh, aggressive ones. Have actually gone to my mansion instead of the Humane Society, because the Humane Society don't take aggressive dogs.
Okay, so thank you for that, I just wanted to provide that backstory as well, open it up for discussion now.
You want to speak now? Okay. Um, it says that we uh, that asks for your continued support, you say that we paid for some like uh, how much did we? How much have we supported them in the past year?
Um, your worship, the dollar, well, they don't have in front of me, but it would be probably less than a few thousand dollars.
And the, and the reason why I ask that is because of our, uh, any sort of donation policy with the council that comes out of the PR budget, there's a cap of five hundred dollars. On anything, um, gifts, donations, if it comes out of the PR budget, there, there's a, a hard five hundred dollar cap on that, just as a FYI.
Is that the case for the, there's two councils?
There's two, yes, there's two there, what's the other, there's the, there's the council of public relations, but then there's the community.
Gift round.
Partnership. Partnership is not, it should have, does not have a limited.
Does, that one doesn't?
Does not.
So, it, it sounds like possibly cost to us um compared to donation to them, our cost would be greater.
Yeah.
Oh, hundred percent, yeah, yeah. And I mean, I just think about the alternative, like, we don't have the means to deal with it, and if they weren't there, we would have to implement something, I don't know what, yeah.
We would, we would probably hop the fix down their calendar and try to reform that and get it to become a full type one.
Yeah.
Get their first.
And maybe not even feasible a cost for us.
Yeah. So, currently, it makes sense of the numbers there, um, this year for the community, the council, community partnership, um. That doesn't have a five hundred dollar limit, there's eighteen thousand dollars left in there for the rest of, I'll be changing, um, for the rest of the year, they're requesting a. Uh, they want to, does that a annual, one to two thousand, or they said, or one hundred, I don't know.
They're just asking for a donation, it sounds like a one time right now for this year, because they have a budgeting, like a goal, or sorry, fundraising goal for the year. We, I don't, yeah, it sounded like. They're asking for annual, but in, in, but they, they will also accept their four ninety two. Yeah. They would like us to consider adding into our annual budgeting process, which is, that's about our conversation for our, our budget meeting, but for now, they're asking, I think, for the one or two thousand donation.
I think for the money that they've saved us and for about the headaches that they solve. Uh, two thousand dollars that the upper end of their ask would be not unreasonable, plus we have eighteen thousand dollars available to last us until December.
Well, yeah, your worship, just for the record, there is still expenses to come out of those months, so you do have, you have the community, uh, community dinners coming out of there as well.
Okay, yeah.
Um, and then there's um, the AYC training also at the end of the month.
But then that, if we, let's say we did decide to do two thousand, will we still be able to do all the other stuff?
Yes.
Would that still be your settle?
Yeah.
Does anybody else have anything?
Wouldn't we be able to take the five hundred out of one pot and fifteen hundred out of another pot, or does it all have to come out of the same pot?
I would just like to just stop you there a second, because we also have some other donation requests as well, so I think it would be wise to not use it all in one.
Well, your worship, just for, well, keeping purposes, if, if, I would prefer to come out of one, one part, just for coming, accountability. And, you know, if council wants to make a donation now for this year, then we can also um look at it during budget time to see. If council wants to add it as a, as a budget line, see what fits in.
And you're saying what?
Given budgetary considerations, I'd like to make a motion that we, that we make a donation.
I think we're gonna hold that until the next.
Um.
It is a good one, we still have.
Okay, so let's kick it out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What do you think, more fifteen hundred bucks for this? And you can make a motion of that, so, because then it'll give you, you know, if you, if you're worried about running out of money on it because of other things.
Yeah, your worship, I'm comfortable with twelve thousand, if that's where council wants to go.
Because.
The.
If there's money for it, you do it, the services.
Did you ever want to chat now, sorry, just, I, I just wondered what, so the committee or whole, is that what you? Yeah, so we have two meetings per, um, the month, basically, the, uh, first Tuesday of the month is what we call committee of the whole, which is where we're just discussing everything, it's for presentation, the, um. Donation, um. Whatnot.
And then the second.
Then the second meeting is the third Tuesday of the month, and that one is, uh, well, a regular council meeting, where we basically are gonna go through. All, almost all this stuff again, but we'll just make the motions, so that allows us to have time to really think about it, really discuss things, um, and not make any snap decisions. And, and there, yeah, so there are some, some exceptions, and that is if something is really time sensitive or critical, then we do. We can, that's it, we just try not to, hopefully we can avoid it. Okay, uh, Billy, did you wanna add anything? Are you in agreement, or?
Yeah.
Are you in agreement, or?
Yeah.
Are you feeling with the amount?
No, I agree with it.
Okay. Sounds good.
I just see one under Ski Hill was looking for a donation too, but.
Yeah, we'll get to that next, yeah, for sure.
Yeah, I think we should make a donation for sure, I mean, they definitely have taken, well, when they talk about how many dogs they've taken, it's Watson Lake is like the second, oh my word, so. They're taking more of our dogs than any other community, plus what they're taking, so definitely.
Yes, so, yeah, I'm in agreement, and I think that we should, yeah, make the donation, and then I also would like to see us, and I guess maybe this is a me and maybe you thing, but. Uh, follow up on that, uh, resolution for me, my system or rap, as far as what the Yukon government is doing to, um, fund them. Okay, if everyone's comfortable, we'll move on to the next thing, and with.
So your worship, it will be moved to the nineteenth, three?
Yes, November, November nineteenth, it will be on the agenda for motion, okay, and then at that, yeah. Um, so next up is the donation request from the Watson Lake Ski Hill, and I just need a second to pull up that document, so I can.
Cam, can you give us a breakdown as to what comes out of the community partnership, um, expenses, and then what actually comes out of the public relations generally, just a, just a general?
This year is the first year for your community relations budget, it's a new budget, uh, a budget line that was, that we, that last council had implemented for last year. And the, the few of that line and council of the day, um, put it in there, that was to deal with, maybe it was to deal with. Outwork installations in cooperation with Elephant or David or other community projects, so like the Humane Society fits into that. That idea, but we've never had a budget line for that before, so council had it added into last year's budget. And wanted it as a budget line going forward for those types of one-off, or those types of projects, so it could be multiple projects that use that money. Um, to make it flow through, so that was the reason that that lines there. The other one is, is council public relations, so that covers, um, like the community, Christmas, uh, community Christmas dinner. Um, any of the barbecues and stuff like that we do for the community, come out of that PR, um, line, is where that, so anything that's a specialty events. Um, come out of that, that other.
Thank you.
Um, to go along with the public relations, I mentioned this last year, and I even requested that we put a good budget line, but like, must have missed it, uh, but, uh. Mayor Henshaw and Councilperson, if you recall, uh, one thing that I wanted to see in there was some like prize money for best decorated like Halloween. And Christmas decorations, reason being is not only do you spend a whole lot of money on like, getting the decorations, then everyone goes to your place, so not only, like, you spend money to buy all the stuff. Throw electricity through it all, then you like have trick or treaters on top of that, so like, the expense is like, is pretty crazy, but I'd also like to see. Us provide some financial relief to top three, um.
Um, respectfully, can we save up our budget conversation?
Well, that, that was plus, uh, because we were talking about donations and such, and.
Your, your worship, I can just, I can answer that really quick if you'd like, so that, that was addressed in the red budget.
Oh, that's.
Yeah.
Thank you, that was really quick. Okay, um, so if everyone's good, we'll just move on to the next donation request. Um, which is from the Watson Lake Ski Club, um, the auction is, uh, sorry, and they're requesting a donation for the annual Christmas auction. The auction is the club's principal fundraising event, assisting with much of their operating costs. We appreciate your support, the Watson Lake Ski Hill Ski Club proudly operates the oldest continuously operating ski facility in Yukon. The club is a volunteer organization and registered nonprofit society that provides winter recreation for over two thousand skiers and boarders annually. The Watson Lake Ski Club also works in partnership with other organizations to encourage healthy living and positive lifestyle choices throughout the year. Youth and values of, uh, young children make up a significant portion of our user base, but we have users from two to seventy years of age. Proceeds from the auction go directly towards programs, the purchase of equipment, and maintenance and operating expenses, all donations are welcome. Donations in the form of products or merchandise, gift cards, or cash are greatly appreciated. The auction will take place at the Watson Lake Recreation Center, it is an adult venue and complimentary snacks that we provided during the event, you're welcome to join us for an exciting evening out, um. Yeah, so that's the request, um, so open for discussion.
What's the number that you refer for the Ski Club?
I believe last year's donation was.
Cash.
Cash, two fifty or five hundred.
Go ahead, say what.
Um, last year's donation was cash, and I can't remember if it was two fifty or five hundred.
That's three hundred seventy.
Yeah.
Five hundred. Five, yeah, it was, yeah, it was five fifty.
There have been other years where we did like recenter passes and, uh, some like a Fitbit, and you know, maybe like a little basket, but. Over, over time, it's just kind of morphed into your cash donation, so. Other than donations, are, does the Ski Hill receive other funds? We have an agreement with them, um, it's.
Every yearly, fourteen, five?
No.
Fifteen, five?
No, uh, the new, we have an O U where, um, the town, it's a town facility. Um, we pay the heat and the maintenance on the building, they run it for six months. We still, because of past previous agreements that were signed where, where the, uh, council, council of the day or the municipality give them fourteen thousand. Somewhere in that amount of money every year to run their, just to run their side. So, uh, council negotiated, uh, with the Ski Club for a new agreement, um, would have been a year and a half ago roughly. And where we pay all the expenses, they get no cash from us, but they, in the six months from October till May, uh, October till May. They, they can, they can receive or they can take in any of the money from the rentals if they have the rentals during that six month period. But we're not giving them any money to run otherwise, but we're still paying for the heat, the water, it's.
The nail in it.
Yeah, and.
Tom's girl.
Yeah, all of it.
So, conversation about the donation, I'm comfortable providing a cash donation again.
Sure, and then what do they do with the captain, do they, they just do whatever they want, they buy presents or?
I think they either buy stuff for the auction or that goes towards their fundraising. Yeah, right, okay. Does this mean that we, that we, for example, we do that?
Yeah, so your worship, just for the record of the council, um, councilors, council had, uh, got away from giving donations of the rental space. Because it was such a wide variety of, so council of the day, last council or the council before, I can't remember which one. Deemed that it was better to give a cash donation, and then instead of, um, giving the donation of space, because. The space donated, if we donated the hall, it could be a thousand dollar donation.
Right.
So to make it even, it was a five hundred dollar cap, and then they could put it towards whatever they want.
So that's the old stipulation is whatever, it can't, it can't go to Hall.
Well, they could put it towards.
They can, but we're like five hundred dollars, but their rental, I think, we all pay that.
Some people make one like kid right off some chair, and the kid, there's other people just want the spins, no.
And then they can use it for whatever, like. If they need.
So there are no stipulations, just don't.
Yeah, the line.
No, I just wondered about Thomas's last question, wrote their red budget, what you're talking about.
Well, I asked Joanna recently.
Red budget, or is that already in place in there, is that what you were saying?
I believe it's already, I'll have to go back and look at it for, and I'll get back on it, but.
We don't be, we don't be reviewing everything very soon.
Yeah, and I think where that came from, councilor Seiger, was it was brought forward after budget last year, so we were just playing with inside the money, we are actively.
I'm pretty sure it's not that.
Yeah, anyways, um, I will look into it and follow up when I'm positive, um. It was included in some of their, so.
But i- if it isn't, that's just a worst case scenario, but isn't, so nobody's heard it just.
Yeah.
Um, we still have some money's available this year that we could make it right, not make it right, um. Support people in making the town a more lively and vivid place to live.
I thought the recenter had done it for quite a few years, but they normally did it, I thought, for Christmas, not necessarily Halloween, I had thought.
First, I think it should be both, really.
No, what I'm just saying, I thought that it was Chris, I'm just saying, I thought that it was Christmas they did it, but I'm not sure about Halloween, like I can't.
I think you're right, I, I think you're right, I think we have.
Yeah. I can't talk about Halloween, I just remember there were, when, unless it was there, there was something to do with Christmas, that they had done, con test, yeah.
Halloween industry, well, you see a lot of people, I thought, I remember, yeah.
No, for sure, I'm just saying, I can't, yeah.
Four people, it's everything.
Yeah, 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 no, for sure, there was a few.
So that's, yeah, something that we can certainly discuss.
Yeah.
Okay, so if there's no further, um, conversation right now on the Ski Hill donation, I guess we can put it aside, and then we'll vote on it on the nineteenth.
Yeah, but I, but I think it's something we should support, and we've been supporting it for years, and I think we should continue to.
Absolutely. Uh, okay, so moving on, we have the third quarter development reports. Um, hopefully, everybody had a chance to read those, I'm not going to read them out because they're long, um. But I guess we can go one by one, and if you have any questions, um, about a specific report, or. I personally have to, uh, commend your staff, Cam, that I think these reports are outstanding this time, I know that they were bad before, but I just feel like they're really good.
Yeah. I thought, I thought the, the fire reports that I didn't invite in the hour were, uh.
Yeah.
I was like, wow, that's.
Wonderful question.
And then I found myself looking at it even more of like, hmm, this is really interesting.
I know, right, I have to say, the fire department, I, I enjoy it as well, and they always do such a great job, they're so lengthy and they are really detailed, so I appreciate that.
One thing that did pop up to me was the, where we went from one thousand six hundred cubic meters of water a day to four hundred. Cubic meters, like we, or like twenty-five percent, where was the major holes that, like, where did they discover the major leakages, do you, are you, do you?
Okay, no, 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 with the one, the.
No, 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 with the one, the.
That's a fire.
Uh, we had a huge leak somewhere where we're in danger of losing our red license this.
Yeah.
I was, I was.
Water consumption?
Yeah, I was just trying to follow along based on the reports, sorry. Um, so you're referring to the utilities, yes. We had um three water, uh, water line breaks that we fixed last year. So they were, they were um. They were one inch or three quarter inch lines that were actually just pumping water into the ground.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And but no, it's a great job on. The crew for getting, figuring out where they were and going from the one thousand six hundred.
Yeah.
It's just like it's twenty, twenty-five percent of what were your pumping, right?
Yeah, and then we ran into an issue this fall that um to go with that, that we did, we've done preventive, but when the. Infrastructure work was being done on Eighth Avenue, it's, it's the key. Um, there's the research line go to the motorbike center. And it's, it's um. T pipe and light duty PVC pipe. And it was the, one of the components that came apart, but it was just, just holding together. So when the vibration of the dirt, it actually blew apart and it was a two inch line, we caught it. But it was actually, if it would have went out in the wintertime, we would have had a beyond mess, but. Uh, two inches of water pumping out would have drained our system and area. So um we've got lots of issues like that. Uh, that we're slowly working through, but it falls under our infrastructure funding until we have the next stage where we're sort of behind the goal, but we have the, the test equipment. Um, we have our testing equipment and our staff is using it to test areas of the town to find leaks so we can do, be preventive and. And do those days so we're not hemorrhaging water.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, so for, any questions about?
So for me, um, the utility, so they, they're actually shoveling, they're actually doing snow shoveling. I thought rec department would do that. It says in here that there's snow shoveling to get into um. Trails. There are walkways, trails, to propane fuel tanks. They do that? That's not a rec department problem?
No, because it's not recreation, it's not the club they're shoveling into. Yeah.
Um.
They have to shovel into all the utilities areas as well. Right?
And then I'm assuming that the town employees are doing this themselves, right? For their own, for them to deliver propane and fuel?
To our town facilities, yes.
Yep, they're all doing it to that. Okay, that's good. And then, um, then they were talking about public works, but how they had to fix. More potholes from on Francis and there was another section there. Um, I don't know what for some reason was Norcore and Sibiu that had to do that, because it said here that increased our counts. Um.
Yes.
So that's where I was, that's where I was confused, like why it cost us additional work and cost? When it was supposed to be Norcore and Sibiu that was supposed to take that on?
They're gonna, the Sibiu, like the, the government contract will fix the chip seal in the spring. And they're going to do those problem areas, but our staff hasn't stocked out. Fill them because the complaints from the residents of all the potholes and stuff that were, because our infrastructure is so outdated and the chip seal is so old. It's very fragmented, so it's just caused that much more truck, it's caused more work on it. So our staff did a stockout to put the complaints to rest and then the chip seal crew will be in the spring along with asphalt. To do all the areas that were worked on and the, and these other areas that they hammer it with by all on the trucks.
And then is the town then um putting, charging that back to Norcore?
Some, some, some of the stuff has been, has been charged back, but the other stuff, it's not at expense, they're green.
Okay, no problem. And then the rec center, we know and the urban light center is gonna start giving movies.
Um, it all depends on staff and ourselves, so we're working through that.
Okay. That's a good one. Thank you. And I think that was it for speed for those. Okay, they're all very done very well. Thank you. Councillor, do you have anything to add?
Um, I have a couple just comments or questions or whatever, um, mostly around the fire report actually. Um, again, appreciate the, the reporting, it was really well done. Um, congratulations to Fire Chief Smith on his appointment as the vice president of the. Fire Chiefs Association. Um. I had a question around the fire starting. Um, so we were receiving thirty thousand dollars from community services, which is awesome. Um. Have we received that money and? When, like, what's the timeline for that project? So like, when, when does the tender work for that? When are we hoping the work will be completed? I know there's like nesting. You know, considerations to be.
This is all work that we're working on getting over there, wait. And um. It's roughly about ten thousand dollars per hectare is going rate for um. For fire starting. So we've been in contact with um. I can't remember. And we also reached out, um, they also reached out to first half to discuss about any, if there's any interest in doing that, so um. Based on the size of the contract, it's not something that has to go under. We can just ask for, seek uh.
Okay. My other question on that, I guess, is there's two, it looks like we're stacking some value for that. So we got thirty thousand for community services and then. Um, and then the climate preparedness and the north grant, which is something separate. Um.
And this, they will have different uh timing points, worship, for when the work has to be completed. And we also have to work with uh Wildland Fire and the Ford Street Branch. To approve the areas and that's through consultation with the Air First Nation, the areas that can be fire started. So it's a long drawn process.
What do you think the likelihood is that we will have that fire started like next season?
Well, uh, uh, we have until March thirty first for this funding window. Um. And then next year we have another allotment, I think of fifty thousand already and then thirty the following year. So everything's in cycles, so it's just a matter of getting the ones that are approved through the process.
And then my, another, this is my head, but um. So that money for community services coming to the municipality for fire starting.
Yeah.
Then there's also Wildland Fire, who does their own fire starting, from what I understand. So. So is that money coming from their budget or are they also gonna get money to?
They also, they also get money.
Okay, because I just thought, you know.
We had, we had to apply to Yukon Government. A separate fund than Wildland Fire.
Yeah.
And Wildland Fire stuff is, their funding is for outside municipal owners.
Okay, so ours is just in that.
Yeah, and ours, our money, because it's, we can only spend money on municipal owners. So uh as we're, we're working right now, Yukon Government and their First Nation are negotiating on a larger fire break program. And which would be mechanical, so they would bring in, they would do the harvesting plan and actually. Create a wide fire break like they did in my horse with the eventual plan of putting in um fire resist, resistant trees to be planted in that area. But that's a negotiation thing through uh the Air First Nation and the Yukon Government. So our stuff is just in municipal owners.
Okay, thank you.
So. So, I mean, uh, sorry, just to give a visual, for those of us that aren't farmers or loggers and people that use hectares on. On basis, one hectare would be like what, like the high school field?
Um, a little bigger.
Oh. It'll be, because like, because I just looked it up on my phone, because I was like, okay, one hectare is two point four seven acres. I'm like, oh, that's great. I got acres of like two hundred, two hundred?
Well, a hectare is very similar to a, uh, school grounds, like it's a, like a country residential lot in the municipality.
So I know, I'm just trying to figure out like how much five hectares with, with, how much, like, from where, like the.
My property is four.
Yours is three.
Four hectares? Three point eight seven or something, yeah, right on the floor.
Okay.
Um.
Okay, now I have, now I have a.
Yeah, so you have one. Over by Berry Dairy, that's four acres. Yeah, the one where um.
Oh, and that across from.
Yes, yeah, right across from Jewish.
So everything without trees is roughly four hectares?
Yeah.
Okay.
They got a little bit extra there around, but I'm pretty much for it.
Okay, I have the.
So I have um a couple of things. Um, so there, uh, under one of the graphics here, there is a. Um, section where they break down the types of calls. Uh, there's a section for medical. I'm wondering, are those EMS calls?
Yeah.
Okay, just because, um, you know, that's kind of ongoing.
It is.
Conversation. Um, so, and that's obviously. So that's just this quarter, that's July, September, that's when you're planning for it. And are we being paid for those?
Uh, no, we're not, I'm sure.
The government is completely refusing to pay for them?
Currently are.
Have we ever been paid for them?
Yeah.
So what happens if they just stop going?
Well, the fire department's not gonna stop, like.
I know, but like.
They, and they, anyway.
It's, it, we've been, we've been lot, nonstop meetings with lots of transport, so the volume of the assist calls has reduced. Due to the fact that. Our fire guys would show up and they weren't required. So, um. Um, John has actually been meeting with them regularly. I've been meeting with. At the ATM level and the deputy minister level to try and sort it out. Um, so we're hoping to make some magic, but um. It gets frustrating.
It's just happening in other communities where they're doing those assists as well and.
It is.
And they're just not getting paid.
Exactly.
So that was actually part of our resolution last year, if you recall. Um, yeah, so something that we're constantly. And working towards.
Yeah, I just wanted to know about the communities too, because I haven't heard of that.
So that's, um, that's all for me. Thank you for that, Dave. Okay, um, what can we do about those?
Uh, excuse me.
Okay, so if no one has any further questions or comments on those, um, can I please get a Uber in a second or to adopt the quarter three department reports?
Oh my gosh, should we adopt the, or do they even have the third quarter department?
Thank you, Councillor Pickett. Thank you a second.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Councillor Puckett. Um, all in favor? Yeah, that passes. All right, so next up we have the CA over report and CA is gonna give us a verbal report today.
Um. So as you can see, the, our, the weather has put a stop to our in-ground infrastructure project, so Stikine Avenue and Eighth. And the rest of the work. Um, so we are currently holding seasonal deficiencies, which will be taking place in the spring. Um, which will be the, the final grading, uh, aircraft or culverts, um. Culvert marking, the, the fishing of the bowlers or on the fire hydrants, um, ditch uh. Remediation, a couple more culverts to go in. Um, and then uh water tie-in at Eighth, at the grocery store intersection. Um, I think that we wouldn't um complete that this year because I didn't wanna have a frozen hole mass with driving freight, frost into the ground with the water nights. Um, so that one will be completed in the spring and once, and um, once that is done, then. As I previously men- mentioned, the asphalt crew and. And the ship seal crew will even resurface the roads. Um, so that will be taking place. Um. Uh, Francis Avenue Extension, um, is sitting now waiting for Atco to put the power in. And that is supposed to take place yet before Christmas and my boss communications, uh, the lift station on. Sixth. And we are, um, is nearing completion. Uh, they were hoping to have it done by the middle of the month. I grew by today. They're still working and it hasn't been, uh, ten and the client signing isn't on the building yet. So I'm still waiting on another update on that project. Um, we are working on our water license renewal. Um, it's been, yeah, it's been submitted now. Everything's at the water board. Um, we paid the thirty dollar application fee and so that process is going ahead. Um. I'm sure there's gonna be lots of follow-up questions from the water board to go through, but um for those of you who don't know, our water license. We have to, to, to supply water and water in the community, we don't have a license from Yukon normally. Uh, we applied for a license five years ago. I guess it's four years from now. Um, it'll be, yeah, be five years in January. Uh, then we applied for a twenty-five year license. They only give us a five year license and put a whole bunch more um restrictions and um. And, and demands on us that we had to do, we had to do another hydrogeological assessment in the land at the lagoons, we had to drill more water. Monitoring wells of the lagoon and at the landfill. And so we've jumped through all those hoops and done all that now and. We were submitting, we've been working on this submittal of the water license for almost a year now because it's such a complex document to do. We've had consulting working on it. And it had to go through YESSO and just a whole bunch of steps to go through and um. Well, we're just about done that process and the, uh, the Yukon Government Water Resources Branch come out. And put a demand on us to do more water monitoring wells. So council and monsters capital budget approved the spending of a hundred and sixty, no, a hundred and eighty thou, no, eighty thousand. Uh, eighty thousand dollars to do monitoring wells, welling between that capital budget and when the actual wells went in. And everything took place, it jumped to a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So that was something that bureaucrats just made us do. And it didn't change the, their testing results. It's still test same, we're getting the same results. Um, so we had to do that because we're in, with YESSO, in the water license at the water board. So we've jumped through those hoops now. And um, so now we're working through that process. We're also working on the renewal of the landfill solid waste. Um, permit. Uh, it spent a year at YESSO to get approved, come on forward. But um, so the other issue we're gonna get is the, because the land is Yukon government's, we're waiting on a lease on that to go with the new license. That's been held up on their side. And so we're continuing on, they give us um. Authorization to proceed operating the landfill under our expired permit. They just extended it until the new one is renewed. It's not, with both of those situations, it's not like they're gonna tell us that we can't pump, we can't supply water to the municipality, that they garbage. It's a legal formality through environment that we have to jump through. So those two projects have taken a whole lot of time. Um, then um, we've been working on scoping projects for retrofit of the rec center. And um, so that project, I've ju, I've got the final report on my desk. Um, it's hundreds of pages. Um, so I'm in the process of going through it right now. But the initial um response was back, they, we actually had a great. The assessment of the building as to high, like immediate things that need to be done, medium and low risk. To, to do things. So the whole retrofit of that building's come in around fifty million dollars. And the high risk matters for that building came in twenty-five million dollars. So we've. We've completed a funding application to Ottawa under a new fund, it's called the Green Infrastructure Build Building Fund. And so we put an application in for twenty-five million dollars to it, which is the maximum amount. Um, so far, um, the federal government has not approved funding in the Yukon under that envelope and they want to do a project. So we've been working with Yukon Government to submit all the documentation and make sure it's in. So we're not sure where that stands. But that, right now, that's currently the only funding option that's out there to do that high priority work on that building is if we get this G, GI C V funding, or GI.
It's not.
Trying to work this.
Building safer.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's fully safe, yeah.
Can I? Um, without getting too, too far into it, can you just like what types of things qualify as like high risk?
Yeah. Um, it's just bringing things up to new codes, a lot of it is maybe leaky roof, uh, which has got cause some moldy issues, insulation. Um, vapor seal, those type of things, but it all spirals into millions of dollars unfortunately. Um, because the last quote we had, the degree due to the roof on that building was ten million dollars. So um, those things, just the way the price has gone, it's just got ridiculous. Uh, so that building, the rec center, in addition to that, we've been approved for. Uh, two point three million dollars in um federal COVID money, which is the, do with uh heating ventilation. Which is the, do with, uh, heating ventilation, uh, work, so under that. Under that fund. We're replacing all the, um, air counters and ventilation bands in the rec center. Also a part of that project is work at the Northern Light Center and the admin building here as well. So, um, we're gonna see how that project rolls out, I'm just. I know we're gonna have to prioritize and the rec center is the priority for that funding. And then Northern Light Center and Admin Building will be the way you've got money. Yeah, that's right. Yes, this building, yeah. So.
Pretty much.
Well, we're twenty-five year olds, same as the other buildings. Yeah. Yeah.
Last.
Yeah, it's the same, so, but we've got that two point three, two point four million dollar pot to play with, so. We're gonna prioritize the rec center, because the rec center is, is, um, past life. Because part of that building is fifty years old, some of it's sixty, and then the front end's twenty-five, right? So it's the highest priority where it's been needs loved. So we're gonna, that H R money is gonna prioritize there and trickle down to this building again if there's anything locked over. Um, the other projects we've been working on is a scoping project for the Ski Hill Chalet. Um, because it's the same thing, it's a nineteen eighty's building that's, needs a lot of love as well. So we're working on that, I haven't seen the estimates on it yet, um. But I, I've been told it's probably in the three million dollar range to do the retrofit on Ski Shell. Um, so it's just another, another project we're working on, we're trying to get as many projects scoped. And set sort of their, so they're ready to roll out if the federal government or the funding sources appear on the horizon. So that way we've got projects who can target, we're not. All suddenly announce a fund and we're scrambling to do all this consulting work and, and, um. Get a package together, we're, we'll be ahead of the game, we'll have these packages. And currently, uh, Yukon Government's funding all these scoping projects for us. So it's huge, saving us hundreds of thousands of dollars. Um, the other projects we're doing is asthma assessments on all the buildings, so we're, because under the new economic standards, we have to. Um, book on our books now, if there's abatement or, um, work that has to be on the buildings, then. Then as we go through life, so if there's asbestos or lead paint or.
Is it part of that retirement there?
Yes, under the asset retirement requirement, so we're currently, we have consultants in, uh, today and tomorrow. The next day doing this building, Northern Light Center and Ski Shell. It's all part of that hazmat stuff and then we can actually book it on our, um, on our books, so that we're, we're not. We're planning ahead for that type of thing, so that's going on. Uh, another project that we were working on is scoping for another community well. Um, currently our two wells, uh, for that style of water to the municipality are only sixteen feet apart. They're in the same aquifer and so, under the new, that, uh, threat assessment stuff. You always have to think that of all the crazy people out there, that somebody could sabotage a well and not the town, wouldn't have any water. So we're working on scoping for a new, a new well, which is outside of that. That same drawing point, so that's another project we're working on. Um, currently Y G's putting the whole bill on all that project as well. Um, the word will come down to expense for the municipality, it's probably for the drilling, uh, the tie-in side of it. So that'll be a budgetary thing that you guys will see coming up. Um. We are meeting next week, federal government did come up with a new fund, um. It is to do with, um, um, housing and building, but. It's directed to streets, sewer, water.
New development, etc.
Well, it can actually fix old stuff as well, so, um, I've, I'm, yes, yeah, commu- yeah, they call it the. Chief Canadian Housing Infrastructure Fund, and it's a six billion dollar fund nationally. Um. The only kicker on it, we have to apply for it, Yukon Government can't apply for it on our behalf, we have to apply for it. And we have to put up twenty-five percent of the funding. But. So, we're having a meeting with Yukon Government next week. To discuss it and then I also have a webinar on it on the nineteenth coming up to see, but. Maybe in conjunction. With using some of our, our gas tax or community. Community bill fund money, we could maybe finance some of these next infrastructure projects in the interim. Um, to see, but those are things that I'll bring forward in the budget, uh, submission to you and. My part of my meetings with Yukon Government is because the federal government has slammed the door on all funding at the moment. Um, we will not, next money that, that's in the budget for any infrastructure work after next year's follow-up stuff that we have, so the. The finishing of the infrastructure that we had done this, last year, this year, uh, chip seal and all that, there's no money. In the future budgets until twenty twenty-seven. So we're three years away unless we can finance under this community housing structure fund. And use some of our own money to bankroll to get us through to twenty twenty-seven and get a bunch of the work done, so, um.
Has there been a tender put open that chip seal and stuff that's gonna work?
No, Yukon Government's gonna do that sometime over the winter. Um, so yeah, so we've got a lot of balls up in the air trying to sort of where we're at, where we're going. Um, so that's sort of my submission right now and. Unless council has questions about other things they've seen around town and I can answer them.
Couple of questions, if you want us to do that, yeah, okay. Um, possibly you could touch on the cemetery, just to, just to see whether is that still progressing?
Yeah, they're working on it, um, they're working on it this week.
Okay, um, my next question was, um. The Recplex boiler system, so I was not here for that meeting unfortunately, I did, I read about it in the minutes, but, um. I think council passed the tender, being awarded to somebody?
So you're, you.
Yeah.
I missed a couple, L C N?
Yeah.
Yes, but that's not the rec center.
What is that?
Not, it's a water treatment plant.
Oh.
Sorry, there's a hole, there's a hole.
There's lots of, okay, okay.
So, uh, so yes, council did approve the installation of the new boilers at the water treatment plant, um. The company is working on, so they've submitted their plans and their equipment stuff to the engineers, engineers have responded back. They're working towards starting that work in the near future, uh, that building. The rec center boiler project, um, is still in design, uh, along with the boiler project for the swimming pool.
And my other, oh. Second part question to that was where, how are we funding that again? Just because when we were talking about the H B X stuff, I asked if it was rolled into that, you said no, it was separate.
It's, it's under our gas tax or C C B F, that's what council approved the capital budget.
Okay, and then, um. My last thing is about the hockey ice, is that good to go now?
Um, themselves was working on it today and I think their conversations with minor hockey was that. Uh, hockey is starting maybe Monday.
And then I know, well, yeah, this conversation a long time, John, I know it's like a money thing, um, but. I heard from a number of people that, you know, the dream would be that the hockey ice could be in earlier and I'm just wondering what the. What that looks like realistically, uh, if that's something that could be considered in the future, like for it even end of September and or in October.
Yeah, it. We've been trying to do that, but we also wanna wait for Simco to come around and serve the ice plants, because they do all the communities in one trip. If we wanna spend money to have them come up on a one-off, then it can be done.
Can we do a little like refund or not, just because, um, and I don't know this for certain, it was just, I heard just people not hearing about it, but. That other, some other municipalities do start it up a bit earlier, so we can somehow, you know.
Yeah, that comes down to. So, no, we've, we've talked about it and, but there's been con- conversations and, um. Shannon and us have those conversations with minor hockey and rec, because of the user groups, there's no sense us. Putting ice in on September if they're not gonna use it, because now they're, minor hockey's have been talking about not even starting. Soon as the ice is ready, so then, you know, then it costs us a big money to have it.
Oh, yeah, okay.
How much does it cost to have, I mean, that's in thermal, it's like.
It's like seventeen thousand dollars in light years, you know?
Yeah, it's, it's, I don't know the exact dollar amount, but it's. And then we'll, I'll keep it too, because if you don't keep it up, or scrape it and flood it, then the ice deteriorates. And then they have to start all those structures.
Yeah.
And cemetery, it's hard to justify having that there, if you're, you're a cat.
I think we're running a staff of three, right, so it's a bad time, the fall time, we're trying to clean up all the parks and. Playgrounds and stuff and try to make ice, which takes two people as well, so when you have a staff of three, it makes it really hard to, you have your work, that's right.
Um, and then the last thing I wanted to ask you was the Christmas dinner?
Yes.
What date, what's the final date for that?
The purity Christmas dinner is December twelfth and I confirmed with Councilor Slater today. That the grads are going to do the.
On December twelve, yeah, on December twelve.
Perfect, thank you, that was all nice, warm stuff too, so. Um, does anybody else have any questions for town, and follow up into C A O report, or any questions for anything?
Yeah, it's swimming, or what kind of boiler system is that, district heat? We also have district heat, but we also have a backup, um, um, oil cooler in there as well, which is. I wanna say probably fifty years old steel insulation, it's expensive, yeah.
It just is interesting, if district heat is a water treatment.
Yeah.
But it isn't, you just say it's not?
No, it is, it is, yeah, it makes a huge difference.
Yeah.
Um, I think this year we didn't even have to fire out the boiler, um, but depends on the season, like the year, sometimes, uh. That cool, this start up and stuff, we have to actually use the boiler, um, but not to do this year, we didn't.
That's funny, because I thought it was over under the end of the summer, then TAC would make us use more.
Yeah.
Well, we.
Having a year-round swimming pool would be step, just, yeah.
When it would be at home. The car, um, yeah, so we do our own sub-voicings, I understand.
I understand the cost, but I mean, we're talking water to you and.
Yeah.
Busy with the pool and having a swimming pool year round, I can go, why do I wanna go to coordinated pool in the summer when I got lots of make lucky living all up? But going to a pool during the winter season would be a huge bonus idea for our community. Not only that, but vertices, spray, our city's insurance are in skip, skip replacements, what a better place to go for busy. I do really believe that that would be an asset, right?
Your last up. Um, any other thoughts? For Cap, questions, sorry, I don't, okay, so with that, thank you very much, C A O Lockwood. We will move along to the next item, which is the fuel card block tender. Um, so there was an admin report provided to us from admin, um, which I will read, um, and again, we're just discussing this tonight. We'll make this final decision November nineteenth meeting, um, so. The purpose of this admin report is to provide council with a contract award recommendation for town fuel card block services. The fuel card lock contract is a year-to-year, one term, one-year term. To provide gas and diesel for all town of Watson Lake fleet vehicles and heavy equipment. Doll Contracting currently holds the service contract. The town published an invitation to tender on October third, twenty twenty-four. The tender was emailed to the following local fuel service providers. Or sixty Petro, Doll Contracting Limited, Watson Lake Tags, A F T Petroleum, the Yukon Way, and Alaska Highway Rescue Limited. In the tender document, bidders were asked to indicate if the rates provided were fixed or variable and if a discount on their posted rack rate was being extended. An addendum was issued on October eleventh to provide additional addition, additional information to bidders. About the approximate volume of gas and diesel consumed annually under the contract. Upon tender closing, two compliant bids were received, one from Doll Contracting Limited and another from A F T Petroleum. Both bids were based on variable back, base rack rates and included all other fees and taxes as follows. Uh, so, the, um. Bid from Doll Contracting was, um, no discount to the posted rack rate provided, um, so for diesel. Including all other fees would be one dollar fifty-eight cents per liter, G S T included, and then for, uh. Gas, it would be a dollar thirty-eight, sorry, a dollar thirty-three, um, per liter, G S T included. And then the bid from A F T Petroleum, they're saying a discount of ten cents per liter from the posted rack rate. And then the diesel would be a dollar seventy-nine per liter with G S T included. And the gas would be a dollar seventy-one with G S T, per liter with G S T included. So, that was a mouthful, the rates provided will fluctuate based on fuel providers' posted rack rates, however. Doll Contracting Limited, even without a discount provided, currently has significantly lower rack rates for both diesel and gasoline. So there is a recommendation from admin, which would be to go with the, um, lower bid, um, but this is open for discussion, so, um.
Definitely.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay.
No, is that for home heating and fuel too, did they have one on their?
No.
Yes, for the equivalent of time.
Yeah, your worship, um, the home heating fuel is, isn't up yet, and that's currently held by, that's why there is two.
Yeah, sorry.
We're making our form up, maybe.
This is strictly, um, diesel fuel and gas can for.
Yeah.
Make a motion, let me.
We're gonna pass a motion on November twenty.
I think so.
Sorry.
Then.
Thank you, okay.
Next.
Thank you. Yeah. Good, okay, so there's no further, uh, conversation on that, we will move along to the equipment of the deputy mayor. Do I need papers about that or? So, um, the role of the deputy mayor, oh, there is the bio, actually. Um, the role of the deputy mayor is basically to assume the, um, responsibilities of the mayor, um, the, and the. Um. And for some reason I'm available or incapacitated, um, so I have asked Thomas to fill that role. So we will need a, I assume he's willing to accept, I'll need somebody to move and second that we can.
Make the motion, yeah.
I said I'm asking you, somebody would move and second.
Oh my, the motion for Thomas to be. The, that we, okay, in Lauren's absence.
I'll second that motion. All in favor? Thank you. Uh, the next thing we have is the appointment of the A Y C representative. So if there's anybody here who doesn't know, the Association of Yukon Communities is a, um. Advocacy body that, um, has membership from. Many municipalities, but, um, the purpose of the association is to further the establishment of responsible government at the community level. And to provide a united approach to community ambitions. A Y C assists communities in their endeavor to achieve and sustain strong and effective local government. Thereby, thereby improving the quality of life for all of the people of the territory. Um, the association is made up of, of an executive, um, of a president, past president, first vice president and. Uh, second vice president and a board of directors, made up of representatives from all members, um. So, I am presently serving as the president, um, and. Tanina has been our representative in the past, um, she has expressed interest in filling that role again.
I'd support Tanina in such an endeavor.
Okay, so that's the motion, um, you can move that? Oh yeah, sorry.
Confused.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Because we can't make the motion on the card lock, but we can for deputy mayor and all this stuff, so like, which one is it?
Yeah, your worship, one's an appointment for, for Earl Seths and the other one is the financials.
Okay, well then, in that case, I do make a motion to have Councilor Pickett as our A Y C representative. For set appointment.
Let me do a second. Second, thank you. All in favor? Thank you, passed. Next, we have the appointment of the Recreation Advisory Committee representative.
Apparently I'm that person, I'd like to continue that role if I could. Part of my time, but that could be.
Okay, so. So. If, if you like, yeah, you can just say that you move to appoint Thomas as the Recreation Advisory Representative. You making that motion, Councilor B? Second?
I'll second that.
Councilor Pickett, all in favor? Passed. And that brings us to the end of our agenda.
No, it isn't. Counselor open the forum.
Oh, sorry. It's because I already said all my things. Uh, okay, sorry, the council are open forum, so um we'll go around the room and you can just. Anything that you want to discuss, bring up, questions for Cam, questions for me, just things that you want to mention on the record, um, now is your opportunity to do that. So let's start with Tanina, Counselor Bujett.
And Lauren, you asked them of mine, and I already asked them of mine when I did the department report, so thank you.
You've got your questions answered. Okay, Counselor Wiff, we'll move on to you. Anything for Counselor Wiff, anything that you want to? Yeah, anything. Well, I mean.
I wanted to one thing, but next morning, I want to make sure. We have kids getting ready to vote, we're burying the kids, they're buying the shit, they're young men, throws to death, the drugs are absolutely insane. There is no R C M P and like absolutely, I'm not holding everything, I don't ever see them. And I'm not saying anything about them, so don't get me wrong, I'm not. If they need help, then somehow we're gonna get them.
Have we ever, uh, has the town ever um? Thought about work or has there ever been discussion of the neighborhood watch or groups like that? So so yes, um, we. It's a little difficult because uh the art station wants to lead that initiative and they're working on it right now.
So do they not, is that something that they don't want us?
No, 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 we've, we've been invited to their public engagement sessions, um, we attempted to um. Basically started to process ourselves um last year. We had uh a couple of meetings, actually, where everybody was at the table, we had David, Dana, Council, the art station, and the town of Watson Lake, as well as EMS and. A couple other organizations, uh, conversations were good, we were working towards a tripartite agreement to move the community safety plan forward. And unfortunately was stalled out, um, when it came time to sign the tripartite agreement. Um, the art station unfortunately was not willing to sign that, so um they have. Started their own process, um, like I said, we have been invited to attend their um. What are they?
Workshops.
Workshops, which of the team leaves that to my hall, but um other than that, it's, that's basically where it, where it lies at this time. Um, we do meet with our C and P pretty regularly, um, but it's. They sergeant comes to council.
Yeah, your worship, I know. The mayor and council have written letters to Department of Justice, to the head of their C and P, to all those different ones, to lobby for more support.
Right.
Uh, so those things have actually taken place as well.
So can we not actually just second to that, I was just recalling the last time we did meet with the Minister of Justice, and she said that there would be some follow-up. With us, and I don't think that ever happened.
No, so we can.
So can you request that?
We can send another letter asking for an update with this.
And can we maybe have um our C and P at that meeting, and and sorry, if we were able to go on?
How is it that we go about trying to create some kind of relationship with L F N on this topic? And like, I want to step on my own face, don't get me wrong, but I'm definitely remember to try and form something, it's not only the people.
Oh, no.
So for them just to take it all themselves, that doesn't, that doesn't feel right to me.
Do we know or be um? Meetings that they have, are they private, do you have to be invited public?
They're public and actually we, uh, Tiffany's been attending as our, as our rep, they actually got a meeting uh today, this year is day.
Day tomorrow.
The day tomorrow, it's a two-month hall.
The downside is that it happens all-day workshops on a weekday, uh, so it's difficult to attend.
That's for me too.
So.
It's hard, you mean.
And we, it's lovely we do have Tiffany representing us there, but. I feel like somebody always think it possibly. Come tomorrow. Yeah.
Um, my current goal today on the topic, the, the high school students were asked to fill out a safety survey to put in together a safety plan. Of some sort, and it was just like, what sort of things use me that would like help out kids, so we had a copy of it, but there's five questions. Like, what is your definition, definition of safety? Where do you feel safe? Have you ever felt unsafe? What are some ways that could mitigate that? And the kids submitted their responses, so we'll see where that goes, but.
Yeah, that's.
There are things happening on, on it, but like. The, the, the roots on the ground, though, the, 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 the actual. Oh, gosh, it's such a complicated. So.
And it's for me too, Thomas, I just, I, I'm not gonna try to give credit for anything. I tried to start something, only because I was concerned. But since then, it hasn't gotten any better, you guys. And I'm not as far as my distance, it's gotten, it's got beyond where. I dug more trees than I ever dug in my life in the last ten months, man. And it's not only a lot of its additions, a lot of its animals, but I mean, there's young kids. And there's, there's no R, R C M P after we leave, I swear to God.
Well, I mean, it's, it's not just our C and P, it's a total community, um, yeah, issue, right? And and so we have to figure out, it's your moment, I'll turn it on, I'm sorry, thank you, yeah, sorry. But yeah, we, we do have to figure out as a community as a whole, including our C and P and the hospital and, you know, L F N and.
Totally agree.
Yeah.
But we have to start to look at it, because it's really, really, um. I hate to say it, but I don't sleep because I haven't slept in three years, man. There's not, the night goes by and I'm not looking at my sponsor, cause I, and my wife, she never sleeps, she's terrified of where we are. And that's where we're at. I mean, you've got guys living all around you, what are you? She don't, she's the nicest, funniest lady I've met in my life, and she's terrible.
Yeah.
And I know we've been there, but we've lived there, we've got the school grounds, and it's a residential area, and it's wherever you want, if you're raising children.
You got your, I'm sure this goes on in. Other communities in Yukon and every, have we stopped with other communities to see what their, some of their solutions might be, or what they're doing? Yeah, absolutely. Have those discussions directly, but.
Well, I, I don't have my corporate words, and other communities are actually doing the community safety plan. And and Tesla, this is a prime example, and if all are done, they've gone, they've done the community safety auto setting, they've done the plan, they've got community safety officers.
Yeah.
And they're not there to enforce, they're just there to make sure people are safe, right? And if there is a party house or whatever, they'll report that information back to the R C P.
Yeah.
And they're very visible, but it helps, because then you're not, if there's people that are intoxicated, they can get them the ride home or get them to a safe place. Uh, people aren't freezing to death, they're, they're the eyes and ears, and, you know, they become trusted, so they know what's going on. And I think, I think that would be a great happening for our community, right? Because, um, their C and P are still spread out as well, right? Because they're doing over posts, they're doing hopefully everywhere, right? So, um, and staffing, man, the staffing issues have been another thing, but other communities, that safety plan is good, because. It goes down to the, and they've done, and our communities, still the grassroots, right? They've done their workshops, so it's in the evening and on weekends when other, everybody can uh attend. And I was, I'm glad to hear that Thomas said that this, the kids were surveyed, but the kids have been surveyed numerous times over the last fifteen or twenty years. And part of the work that uh we are, you know, Women's Society had done, was they had had those surveys done. And it was remarkable, because I participated in the, the last four rounds, it's about seven years ago now. But they, the questions from the kids from ten years before that, the answers from the kids were identical. Ten years later, it was the same concerns about, some of it's easy, some of it was laying to two mile, which isn't easy, but it's something that we got to address, sorry. So things like that, in certain areas, cell phone coverage, so they can actually call for help, because Lucky Lake was a, another area that was brought forward, right? Because you get the Lucky Lake, and, you know, people are drinking, and it's at night, and they're out there, and they can't phone for help, right? So there's all kinds of, there was themes of all the stuff the kids had brought forward.
Yeah, even two mile, there's no cell service there.
Yeah.
If you go to Annisburg, and he works for me, and I will call him, I can't give, I went to Cole's, I'm like, I'm getting self-service, which is great there.
Well, it's no different than people with a ski hill, right?
Yeah, there is, I mean, yeah.
So there is box, I'm self-service.
Yeah, so, but, but the surveys have been done over and over, but nobody does anything with it, right? They, they go through that phase and do that consultation, but nobody actually brings it to a plan. So I'm hoping that this time, L F N, while being there actually going through it, that they will bring that forward. And the other thing that's going on right now is that the policing, I don't know how many of you know it, but um. Watson Lake is served under a community tripartite policing agreement, which is an agreement in between We Are First Nation, the federal government, and the territorial government. Of that, that supplies four policing positions in the community. So those positions are supposed to be used for um community engagement, for, you know, teaching stuff to the kids and do all that thing. But when that implement, when that agreement was signed, it was supposed to be four members. Uh, surplus to establish, so that meant if there was, at the time that agreement was signed, there was nine R C and P members in Watson Lake. So that agreement should have brought another four positions to Watson Lake detachment to bring it to thirteen. But they didn't, they left it still as nine positions, and they just took those four, the different funding pot to pay for four. So the Our First Nation could actually, if they held the federal government to the letter of that agreement, or they could actually pull four positions away. And one of the positions, other positions, the five that would be left, is a B B C position, which is supposed to police any of the B C jurisdiction. So that would be for R C and P to do everything else in our whole area. So L F N is, actually has been pushing back to try and get those numbers out. But so far, it hasn't happened, and it might. Part of that agreement might change if this community safety plan goes ahead, that maybe those, some of those four positions might go to those community safety officer program. And then the federal government can act with staff, with the task of backup. But there's all kinds of things, and it's a long process, but that doesn't fix it, it needs community engagement, it needs neighbors looking after neighbors.
Yeah.
They need people not being afraid to phone the detachment, and or phone scan, or actually take a stance as a.
Well, there is very much.
Yeah, there still is.
There's.
And you actually been down, uh, I.
Well, it's only true in Yukon housing, right?
Yeah, no, it's not, it's a, I don't think they'll look at any housing. I've, they've been down, doing surveillance, I've been down with them, and they've been down. Um, so there are, there's things going on that people don't see, but the court system has made it really hard, right? With this catch and release.
For sure.
Things, so, but I think the, the, the strong voice is the Our First Nation working on the safety plan. And if they can actually get it grounded with the community, I think then there's potential to grow.
What time is that open forum, what do you work with?
All day, starts at uh nine AM, and it goes to about four.
And two mile home.
Two mile home, everyone's home, and they break lunch, they break lunch, they provide lunch.
They provide lunch, yeah.
And they've got like victim services, R C and P, they've invited the town, so they're, they're trying to get a lot of different stakeholders to provide input. Uh, where I'm trying to get a little bit of clarity is, like, they're forming this committee, which is going to be the Safety Committee, and we're just trying to get clarity on the town's role, or how much involvement they want of. Past this planning. Well, like, they're welcoming information from everyone participating, it's. It's just not clear what this safety plan is gonna look like afterwards, after the plan is created.
Who's the facilitator?
Uh, the, uh, Keanu. It's an indigenous branch for community safety, and that's all they do is community safety plans.
Federal, we can start workshop.
Yeah, they have a facilitator that's doing it, but there's um members from the federal government there as well, have to deal with.
So we brought down House of Hope, and what they're, they're managing is, and that's who the other communities have been working with, right? It is the House of Hope, and they're creating these. Yeah, they're creating these great, great safety plans for communities, but it just didn't work for the three of us to be able to work together, even though that was our vision. And that was what was really stressed, was for the three of us to work together, but it, that was the vision, and that didn't happen. Um, and so right now, like we said, two mile, um, there's, L F N is doing this safety planning. Now, and they're taking that on, and you're right, they, one, one organization shouldn't be responsible for it all, but that's what they have chosen to do. Even though we, we, the town of Watson Lake, have had, have very much expressed that we would like to work with L F N.
For sure, well, we're trying to work on it against the.
Yeah.
Try to bring that up.
Yeah, but just to give you some context, that, that we have certainly heard what the community has done, and we have been very proactive in trying to meet that need. Um, but like I said, the mission wasn't shared by the rest of the community as to what our vision was.
Right. Oh, but where's more, how do you, you, it's not, it's only.
So, um, yeah, if anybody can attend that session tomorrow, by all means. Um, in the meantime, we will send a letter to the Minister of Justice requesting an update and or a meeting. Um, and then we're also going to request the sergeant, the R C and P, um, committee council, uh, committee of the whole in December, and then we can um have a, a discussion further on this.
Man, don't get me wrong, it's not, I'm not trying to say nothing bad.
Yeah, let's keep the dialogue going.
Honest with you, when we were all teenagers, if I'm honest, you, we were running around at two o'clock in the morning, we'd probably be a bunch of us every year. So we felt thankful that you were.
Eddie? Did you have anything else for open forum that you wanted to add right now? Okay, thank you. Uh, Counselor, okay, okay.
Um, I'm not right now.
Okay, thank you so much, uh, Counselor Slater? Okay. So with that, we will go to gallery open forum, we have one person that toughed out this entire long meeting, so I'm gonna throw it over to you, if you'd like to go first, if you have anything you'd like to add.
I just want to say, looks like you've got a great group of people.
I think so.
So, good luck and best wishes, and everybody's rooting for you, I don't know where the hell they are, but.
Well, we got to come on Zoom, right?
Other people are here, and, you know, congratulations to everyone, for just throwing your ring and the hat and just caring.
Thank you so much.
They don't always care what you know, they just care that you care. So, good job.
Thank you.
Your worship, I think if we could um. Maybe if, once on Zoom, if they just want to raise their hand.
Get your hands, um, if, okay, so if you're joining us on Zoom, and you'd like to contribute something for um gallery open forum, um, if you can just raise your hand, it will um. I'll give you, I think. Oh, lots of hands.
Uh, yeah, so the first one is Dale Burris.
Dale Burris.
Sorry, I didn't know how to unmute. Um, I just had a couple of questions, uh, with, uh, when the Chip Seal crews down, doing. That kind of work, is there a possibility, maybe, that we could get them to fix some of the worst spots around town that the roads aren't getting dug up?
Uh, yeah, we've, uh, we've been in discussion with, with Margie on that, so we're working to finalize that as it becomes closer.
Okay, and then I just, I might have missed it, um, how is the plots at the cemetery doing?
Um, if they're, we're proceeding on it, uh, they're making headway, they are working out there currently, other, right now in the snowstorm.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, but so there, there should be some done, though, before next spring, though, right?
Yeah, that is correct, yeah.
Okay, and uh, maybe one other thing, um, so with the uh pricing for the fuel is um. If my understanding was that uh Doll Contracting is going to be, like, it's cheaper but without a discount? And the other one has a ten cent discount on the rack price?
That's right.
Okay, no, that's everything, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, your worship, Angela Miller.
Angela Miller, you are up.
If I can figure out how to unmute this phone. Um, I guess just to go off of what Dale's question was too, about the grave, uh, the graveyard contract, are we still going ahead with planting grass? Is that still part of the contract?
I mean. We removed something from it, I can't remember what it was now, so.
It was the, it was the mark, the markers were changed in the project, so, then, yeah, so the grass is still in the contract for next spring.
Okay, so the twenty thousand dollar overage above the fifteen percent, wasn't that supposed to be? Um, like an ex-nay on something, so we can get back onto the budget, or?
So it was, it, it came back to the, the last council, the last council, special council meeting, it was, it was brought back, and there was a revised price submit. It was brought back and there was a revised, uh, price submitted that was below budget. With, uh, stuff with items removed, but the grass wasn't one of those items.
It was, it was the markers or something.
Mark, there was a bunch of different types of markers that were removed that were supposed to be cemented in, so it, it came, brought it back under budget.
Okay, so under budget meaning under a hundred thousand or under a hundred and fifteen?
Probably like ninety nine seven.
Yeah, it's under, it's under, it is under.
Right on budget, though.
Okay, well, that's awesome, um. Um, also too, I've, my interest is now peaked to go to that safety meeting tomorrow, so I'll probably be joining you there, Tiff, if you're there. And, uh, and just seeing what everybody's got to say and may have a little bit of input on that, but I totally agree that, um. You know, there's not a lot of action with the members driving around at night, and I've noticed that a lot too. Uh, it would be nice if the members could at least go on like an hourly run, so at least people know that they're coming. So, um, they're not, you know, just assuming that they're, that they're not, so that might deter some of the. Some of the stuff going on, um, but yeah, certainly there is absolutely a safety issue, and that is with the drugs and addictions and vandalism and, and, and. So hopefully we can come up with some sort of a plan as well, even if L F N doesn't.
Thanks for that, Angela.
Okay, thank you. And welcome, everybody.
Yes, thank you. Um.
So your worship, nobody else has raised their hands with any questions?
Okay. So now that brings us to the end of our agenda. We do not have any in camera items tonight, so. So, I'm sorry.
Are you going to adjourn?
Yeah, sorry, I'm going to leave very much into adjourn, please.
I'm going to listen to adjourn.
Thank you, a second. Thank you. Good night, everyone. Thank you, and we'll see you November nineteenth.